I called a meeting on October 13th to order today. Mr. Stewart County will have our invocation and then we'll stand and have our place to leave. We'll all, I'll ask everybody.
You want me to work right here? Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity you give us to serve the people of Lawrence County. Let's give strength, choose the path of righteousness, keeping you in all that we do. Please guide us to do what pleases you first and foremost. Lord, I ask that you continue to give strength and resources to many that have been affected by floods in our state. Thank you for helping our county and seeing that we didn't have much damage at all. Thank you for being with our EMS, our dispatch emergency 911, law enforcement, and all that serve the people of Lawrence County. Dear Lord, I ask that you just continue to bless us and be with us as we go forth tonight. In our Heavenly Father's name, amen.
Praise the ladies who lie of the United States of America. To the world which is theirs, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. I want to start by making a couple comments about the historic past two weeks we've had. We've got fires on the west coast, floods on the east coast. And words cannot express the appreciation that I have for all that's been done the past weeks by our public safety, our public works, our fire service, our sure 911 system, our EMS, other leaders that came forward to help us get through the past two weeks. There's no way I can mention everyone in all, but the food, the everyday items needed, water, not just us in Lawrence County, but other places that needed the help. I watched as Columbia Police Department escorted a fire truck from Lawrence County through Columbia to one of the hospitals down there. We in Lawrence County, we have a lot of repairs and issues ahead of us, but we will get through it. I'm so proud to say I live in Lawrence County and South Carolina. As I've always said about Lawrence County, there's nothing like seeing help coming when you need it. My thanks to all that helped. Thanks to the good Lord for getting us through this. And I'd like to open the floor on council if there's any other council members that would like to make a comment about what happened the past two weeks. Mr. Peet.
Yes, I just want to echo the words that Mr. Chairman has said. It's been quite uplifting to see the amount of volunteerism and help throughout the state. And I'm just certainly thankful for that. Thank you.
Mr. McDaniel.
I am too proud to say I'm in Lawrence County, especially I saw the effort that the Sheriff's Department put together immediately responding to the needs of the citizens of Columbia. Just appreciate everybody coming together and showing support for our brothers and sisters in the Midlands.
Sam.
It has been an expression of Christian faith in really being a servant and also just being a neighbor as the people of Lawrence County went to assist the people in the Columbia area. I think it was very devastating to a few and I think it continues to be because it was out for a whole week. And I think the way we tend to always do is to make sure that we uplift those people who are down. And I think that's what we continue to do. Several agencies and organizations are still receiving products and everything to send down. I know the Columbia area, I know that the Sheriff's Department has took a lot of water. And so we continue to do what we're supposed to do, neighbors to those neighbors that we need to be in, uplifting when we need somebody's down.
Mr. Seag.
I think Mr. Avery is going to make a complete report in a few minutes about what happened here. I went down to King Street last night, about 200 miles from here along with Lawrence County people with a little water and baby food and paper towels and a lot of things. And I think that we in Burke County, they're about half our size and cut off in one direction completely to the south. I think we can get to these places and see if you folks unload the water and hold up some, but I think everybody pissed together. I recommend the Sheriff's Office or Fire Office. And I'll have some comments in a few minutes after Mr. Avery makes his presentation.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, once again, I want to echo what a couple of council members said also, just the awesome team effort of coming together here in South Carolina. And it's going to be, I know it's going to be a long battle rebuilding homes and all the infrastructure that's been damaged by this flood. So, once again, I'm thankful here in Lawrence that we have minimal damage and we're able to help those that had more damage than we did, so.
All right.
Just thankful for all of it, coming out of this and then to lay the higher power and control of it and got us back here going again and all the hard work that employees did. It was remarkable, it's storied. That's all, I can't say enough about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to add that the 911 services worked diligently during that time to make sure that we have services as needed in our county. And I talked to several first responders, several firemen, several ambulance drivers, and a couple of deputy sheriffs, all that just pulled together and they were all proud of their service. They were proud of our county and they were proud to be able to help our neighbors. So, I think that just shows the heart of our citizens in Lawrence County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Fine. I welcome our good crowd here tonight. And first thing on the island, my approval of our agenda, I think we got one amendment to it. We have a motion for approval of our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve an agenda dated October 13th. The amendment says, Mr. Seag.
Second. Motion in second. Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote by show of our right hand. All in favor, seven to zero. Next thing, approval of minutes for September 22nd, 15 meetings. I'll ask for a motion for approval of our minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve minutes for September 22nd, 2015.
Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We got a motion in second. Any discussion?
Not with a call from the vote by show of your right hand, all in favor, seven to zero.
We got a public hearing ordered at 7:84, authorized in execution and delivery, fee and loop tax, and a company identified as Atkin &amp; Johnson, acting for itself. Public hearing ordered at 7:84, now.
The gentleman from Astor Johnson, I would like for the rest counsel.
Good evening. My name is Bob Buck. I'm the business leader for the Astor Johnson Society of Clinton. And I just want to thank the council for your great support in this new equipment that we're going to be purchasing and bringing online next year. I just want to tell you that it shows our company's commitment to the Society of Clinton, the continued growth of our business there. And again, I want to thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Just before we close, need to call this.
Okay, public hearing still open. Anybody needing to speak for or against, come forward. There's no one to speak, I closed the public hearing. And I have the third reading ordered at 7:84. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the third reading ordered at 7:84, Astor Johnson.
Second.
Got a motion in second. Or any other discussion?
Yes, sir. On page three of the document, Mr. Crook Chang, I'm just, for clarification, I'm reading and quoting at the bottom, "The expansion negotiated fee low shall be determined using one, assessed ratio of six percent, two, the lowest millage rate or rates allowed with respect to the expansion of the negotiated fee and loop, which the party is believed to be 365.2 mils, which millage rate or rate shall be fixed pursuant to 12-44-50." And on the summation, it says it's an investment of $25 million with a special source revenue tax credit of 40% fixed millage. Is that the reduction of 40% of the fee and loop, or is it a 60% reduction?
40% credit.
So that means you're paying 60% of the fee and loop payment, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. No further questions.
It's a credit for only 10 years, but yeah, the other 630 is, gets the field 630.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to be sure to clarify. Thank you, no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Or any other discussion? Not with a vote by show of our right hand, all in favor, everybody's right hand, seven to zero. We got a public hearing ordered at 7:90, Mr. Crook Chang.
Mr. Chairman, one correction, I failed to get the caption correctly. Did you notice the caption regarding, this is the multi-count department raising for Astor Johnson, Prudential Needle. You notice in the caption, it still has Prudential Needle. That should be Astor Johnson since disclosure required for the meeting. My apology for the error. The final documents will be corrected and the epiphany corrected to reflect that. I just sit forward, thank you, Mr. Walter.
Public hearing ordered at 7:90 is open. Anyone who wants to come forward, come forward and speak for or against. No one to speak, we're loading public hearing. I'll ask for a motion for third reading ordered at 7:90.
Mr. Chairman, I move the third reading ordered at 7:90.
Second. Got a motion in second. Any other discussion? Not with a vote, the third reading by show of our right hand, all in favor, seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly, I'd like to see people spend money in Lawrence County. Thank you very much. Number three is updated by Joey Avery, Director of our Emergency Management.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Certainly, it's my pleasure to be here and try to give you an overview of the storm situation that we've experienced the last two weeks. Before I get started, there were some kind words bestowed on some folks and I'd just like to have these folks stand up just so that we could see them and recognize. I wish we had a larger group, but we'll start right here with Chad Morrell, Director EMS, Matt Pennington, Major Operations. Those guys were in contact with me, seemed like 24 hours a day, talking about the trucks around. You got Greg Lanning, Director of Fire Service, same way, we were coordinating response, we were putting people on standby, just planning for the what-if. And luckily, we didn't have a what-if. Got the folks from Grayport back there, my hats off to them. I was riding the county, looking at creeks and rivers. I saw those folks out riding also and, you know, spending it, they're volunteers and that they were looking out for their community. Last but not least, our sheriff back there had a tremendous effort with supplies through social media. And I'll have him come up at the end of the brief and hear and talk a little bit about his efforts. But I submitted a report to Mr. Seagurs back on the 7th of October to try to recap some of the things that took place. And I think that you folks may have gotten a copy of that. And that was just a small snapshot of some of the things that took place during that timeframe. Storm preparation, we have never, I've not experienced a prediction of nine to 13 inches of rain in just a several day period. So that puts sort of a difference pin on our planning process. So we had to ramp up and we had a lot of coordinated efforts. And our EOC, we opened the EOC, we had city managers from both the City of Clinton, City of Lawrence, police chiefs, public works, fire, EMS, talked to the school districts a good bit via email and phone. And we actually had some face-to-face meetings with the school superintendents and/or their representatives with DOT on Sunday night. So we had a collaborative effort and we were speaking to everyone that could be affected and impacted by this particular incident. You saw that we had a lot of trees that were down, we had some power outages. I commend the rural fire service for cutting those trees out of the roadway and opening that path for emergency services vehicle that needs to run through those. They cut, pushed over to the side, went on to the next task at hand, and that kept our emergency service lanes open. And we did have, you know, some obstacles to overcome, we had some road closures, those kind of things. So it was an all-hands-on-deck, so to speak, effort to maintain our roadways out there for emergency services and even for our citizens to get around. We did encourage people not to get out and about in the middle of water. We had no fatalities that were reported to me because of flooding, any accidents. We had no major serious injuries, so we're very thankful for that. We're very fortunate that we didn't have a lot more damage than what actually occurred. But we did have some damage in this county. And in our collaborative efforts in meetings with the utility departments, the school district, the public works departments, EMS, fire, whoever, we all sat around our EOC table, planning and thinking and figuring out what we needed to do and what cost that we incurred in order to repair the necessary damage. Our road bridges, Mr. Rob Russian, he's not here tonight, but I was in his hip pocket, he was in my hip pocket on the King Road Network. That was very important to us. And he communicated with me extremely well. And he actually worked many hours after normal working hours, came in on the weekend, came in on Saturday morning to have him to pay for those kind of things. So with that kind of effort, yes, sir, I can say proudly in Lawrence County also. It's a tremendous task when we have to plan for the unknown. But when you've got those parts that fit in that puzzle to make that plan happen, it really makes it impressive. And we were able to go to Wimmsburg last night and Mr. Seagurs really tried his patience last night because my GPS kept us going around in circles a couple times. But we went to Wimmsburg and he saw firsthand what a full-fledged operational EOC would look like. We have one, we exercise it, we have had to actually open it for an emergency, so to speak, like those folks are. They've been running 24/7 since the operation. We were running about 16 hours a day with staffing and then limited staffing after hours on tall people and that kind of stuff. But it was a, truly a great effort amongst the community. In our damage assessment, we had, last Thursday I spent a day with the National Weather Service. And we rode the entire county and every little crook and pranny out there, we were out there. And one of the things that I want the National Weather Service to do for us is when they put out a flood warning or a flood advisory, we want to identify some of these low-lying areas we know that actually flood. And they are going to put that into their documentation to us. And that's going to help us when that advisor comes out, that information's going to be there. Because some of these areas, we don't have a lot of traffic through, but we could potentially get someone in jeopardy if we didn't know it was flooding. Friday, we had a damage assessment team from FEMA to come in and we did a public assessment and trying to look at the damage of the public infrastructure that was created by the storm and the water. We looked at the utilities, we looked at parts renovation, we included airport. There's about 12 different agencies that I communicated with to get documentation from to add to our overall cost. Because FEMA has a certain cost that they have to see in order to qualify for a declaration of disaster. That preliminary request has gone through to the state and it is now gone to FEMA for their consideration. Now whether we get that or not, I can't say it's the preliminary. But if it is declared, then we'll be able to get about 75% of that total cost of damage back. Federal cost share is 75% and the county match is 25%. Even that 25% would impact our budgets, we realize that. So that's the reason we're hoping that we can get this declaration. Hopefully, we'll notice something in the next few days. And once I get that notification, I'll send it to Mr. Seagurs and I'm sure he will send it out to council members. So that's some of the things that we're looking at, trying to recoup some of our monies. And I think, you know, money is tight, no doubt about it. We heard some conference call yesterday. Mr. Seagurs and I was on conference call with the governor. She was talking to the counties, county emergency management directors, asking about any potential needs that they had or whatever. And a lot of issues came up about money. And you run an event like that for seven to 10 days, 24/7, all those resources, it certainly becomes a concern, but it's something that we have to be understanding of. I think I've pretty well covered about everything that I wanted to cover. I didn't get that into detail to tell you how many trees were removed, how many tons of debris were removed. If you would like to have that, I'll certainly give it to Mr. Russian and some of the other utility directors, we can get that together for you. But just wanted to let you know that it was a tremendous effort out there by county staff, volunteers, city staff, school staff, everybody. It was just a tremendous effort to get that. Because as we were doing our jobs here, we were still looking out for the citizens in Columbia and below and figuring out how we could help those folks. But it certainly resonated with everybody that was sitting in that EOC that, you know, this could have been us. It could have moved further north and we could have had some major, major issues. So I'll end that right there and I'll call the sheriff up so he can talk to you about social media. This is the only day we've been shy, so. What the sheriff did on Monday was remarkable. We, and I'll let you tell, but there was, and as Mr. Seagurs saw last night, as we were unloading pickup trucks and trailers full of water, that's a lot of weight, a lot of, but tell him that.
We actually lost count of somewhere over 150,000 bottles of water that was donated by the people here in this county and quite a few faces in here come by the sheriff's office. It was just, you know, as y'all said, it was just something to be proud to say. It wasn't the sheriff's office, it wasn't, but the people in the community. And that doesn't cover the others that's contributed that we're not aware of, but people donated, then we asked for pet food, diapers, and we got overwhelmed. It was going to be a one-day, two-day project to get out and, well, all of us were still delivering water last night, so it was just something great. We were able to deliver to quite a few places that needed, the University of South Carolina, several schools that were set up to distribute, the original county sheriff's office, a church down there, this warehouse, they were distributing, taking it to people in homes. And it was just, it's a great thing to see. And the people here as well as there, one of the ladies that was working last night at the church, getting the people out, her house was destroyed by a tree that fell on it, but she was still out helping other people. So it's just something to say to people in Lawrence County as well as the people in the state of South Carolina. We really have a great state and a great county. But, yeah, I think all together, we, I don't know how many trailers, it was probably 15, 16 trailers and probably twice that pickup truck loads of supplies that we need carried to the people that need. So it was, it was great, you know, emergency management, everybody, y'all certainly do have a lot of people to be proud of as far as county employees that stepped up, delivering their own pickup trucks, trailers, whatever they had, it was, they didn't care, they took it to help the people that need.
Well, I'm one that's really proud of Lawrence County. It's hard to think about how important a bottle of water is when you're thirsty. I mean, if you're in the middle of the ocean and you have a $1 million bottle of water up leaving you on the bottle. And I just, I can't put it in words how much I appreciate everybody that, I'm so proud of Lawrence County.
It is hard to actually see that because one of the, some of the trailer letters that we need carried, there were cars lined up coming to the trailer, pouring water. So they were just loading it off the trailers to the people that was needing. And we got to call the day for some people that went down the hill and housing, but they didn't have any drinking water to even brush their teeth with, so.
And I know WLGD worked hard to get the word out too. That gets it out on the airwaves, lots of people listen and.
It was WLGD, Gil Lawrence, all the local hours, all of them were in behind, they had some newspapers, social media. It was, it was a concerted effort by everybody and the people. Once they got to spread the word, I had never seen so many people coming through. We were, like I said, it was overwhelming because we were, I was calling, we were talking to you, how can we get this stuff out, because it was going to get a lot faster than anticipated.
Kind of like, you go. One thing that we got, and I apologize, I put this in red, Joe Tyson was instrumental at the detention center. He kept calling me saying, hey, everything's good, we checked our generators, we think we can handle our own down here. If we need something, we'll call you. That means a lot to me when I don't have to call Joe and say, hey, how's that? Also, we have got a lot of calls from people that have leaky roofs, that have some damage, but I don't think that's going to qualify for storm damage. And what we're going to try to do is to find some volunteer organizations that maybe we can get to help those folks some possible way. Unfortunately, the thing is they don't have any insurance, so it's a tough situation. We'll work through that. I may tap into the sheriff's social media and see if we can collect some of those volunteer organizations to help those folks out. So if you hear of someone like that, please have them call my office and we'll certainly do everything we can to assist them.
I was going to say two comments. Good, I can sort of comment here for a minute. I saw some activity over there, they were getting people over there all night, all day and loading and loading everything and that. The state response here, I think was very good. We had a DOT engineer in the DLC that Sunday night, I believe, was, about roads that were in, unfortunately, we blew one road down in the crossfield at five six. Blew out, they've got to fix it. They would have had at least two EMD calls a day. They were had at least two E and B calls a day and about, well, there's six, I think there's six emergency systems in the state, they do, they go county by county by county and they would report. And yesterday, I think we were always down in Little Park State or listening to the governor himself on that. And I called, I called Mike Pitts and Senator Burton, President Pitts, Senator Burton, and Senator Wilson, like what state it down, I think we need to be aware of that too, and the governor. They, they, they were still down in Little Park State. Our road and bridge foreman told me, he said, I think they had three little crews out cutting that tree, they could not have done it without that voluntary fire, and they said they had a fire on the watch and bridges and cut trees and all that, and I appreciate that. And I think Mr. Avery deserves some credit too. I've had calls from City of Lawrence, City of Clonan, other places about the job he did to try to pull this stuff together. Every time we come together, I think we all, we all are proud of that and I think our emergency service has been terrific, not a great job, I commend them with that. And I think, I think y'all still get supplied now, you might, you might bump into more of them, but it really looked good, I appreciate it.
Thanks. It means a lot. I know we bump heads a lot of times about buying equipment for this park and so forth, but it, when you have something like this happen, it just means so much to have good equipment working. The next thing is second reading, ordinance 799, that's a ordinance between the county and D and W Fineback, second reading, Mr. Cruz.
Mr. Chairman, this is the second reading of the version from the old lease arrangement to a simplified P. Our staff would encourage second reading of this without a public hearing and third reading at the October 47th. You got to answer your questions, Mr. Chairman.
My last for our motion for second reading, ordinance 799.
Slow move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Got a motion for second.
Second.
Motion and second, in discussion. Not to vote by the shoulder by right hand, all in place. Seven, please. Next thing, second reading, ordinance 800, agreement between the county and Project Lombardi. Mr. Cruz.
Yes, but it's all good news. More, this is second reading, this is a expansion of an existing project that will be, be taking place and we would certainly encourage council to approve second reading of this. The name of the company, of course, we'd be disclosed at the public hearing and the third meeting on October 47th. And I'd be happy to issue questions the council may have regarding to Project Lombardi.
Do we have a motion for second reading, ordinance 800?
Mr. Chairman, I move second reading, ordinance 800.
About second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion and second, we have any discussion?
This is five million dollars, is that right?
This is an expansion of a project that's not even open, it's expanding on top of an opening project. Hopefully we expand again.
Awesome project.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other discussion? Not to vote by the shoulder by right hand, all in vote. Seven, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next is rescheduling our November 24th and December 22nd council meeting. I'm going to call on Mr. Cruz on this, but I'd like to remind, we've got a meeting that we need to have set down pretty soon between the planning commission and council concerning home parks and junkyards.
Chairman, I'll deal with this. This, this was brought my attention and 24th of February, that's the fourth Tuesday in November, and of course, ninth Tuesday, it's 26th and 27th. I don't know if, that was not a great problem because early in the week, you know, there would be a preparation required, preparation for the previous week could probably happen. So it is toward the end of the year, I think, the economic development projects come in, some will get done before the first year of sanding, or if that person, so unless there's some special council, I think, I think probably that one is, because that's on Tuesday, we close on Thursday, Friday, so that's, that's your, that's all about there. The one in December is what we probably had, because 22nd is Christmas week. What we've done in the past is just, is this council, if we make one time in December, it'll be on the 8th. So I don't know that what require, that, that, just by consensus, I guess, on that, we wouldn't require a motion or anything, but I would bless you all. But I reckon we hold on to 24th as long as then, on the, just get one meeting in December and we can second to the 8th.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I'd like to, I don't know, will we have a motion, do we need a motion in this case?
Probably not.
I'd like to move that we, that we, instead of using the word reschedule, that we remove the November 24th and December 22nd meetings from our calendar.
Second.
And in the event that we need that second meeting in November for the planning commission, we can then replace it as a, as a, as a planning meeting.
I feel second.
Got a motion and second. Does anybody have any discussion? All in favor, if we should, we're raising right hand, all in favor? Keep that in mind.
I guess that's unanimous.
But keep in mind, maybe we could make a, I think, a planning commission maybe.
And we do need to set up a planning commission and council meeting to discuss the junkyard and parks.
And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Chairman, we need, I believe you have assigned me to, and others, to two committee meetings and I think you're going to talk about that later, right?
Yeah. The next thing is a resolution recognizing ZF AGZF Group on their 100th anniversary. Do I have a motion for resolution 1526?
Slow move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second motion and second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Seven, please.
Phil, I think, and Mr. President ZF here.
Says, whereas heretofore the Lawrence County Council acknowledges from time to time admirable accomplishments and services, whereas ZF AG, also known as ZF Group, is a German car parts maker headquarters in, can't pronounce that.
Freech, okay.
In the state of Cleveland, where it's worth of a burger again. Whereas ZF Group is a worldwide supplier in the automotive industry that was founded in 1915 and specializes in engineering known for its design, research, and development. Whereas ZF Group has over 230 production locations in 40 countries along with 33 service companies that provide a dense network of highly qualified employees in excess of over 134,000. Whereas ZF Group established a manufacturing plant in Owens Industrial Park in Lawrence County in 2010 and currently employs over 2,500 people. Whereas this, the year 2015 is the collaborative year for ZF AG as, ZF AG is celebrating its 100th year anniversary. Now for, therefore be it resolved, Lawrence County Council recognizes and finds that the se, the success of ZF AG, not only worldwide, but within Lawrence County, South Carolina, hereby respectfully awards this resolution of commendation to ZF AG, ZF Group.
Mr. Chairman.
Marvin Moss is here, our retiring DD Director of Lawrence County, and he's played a huge part in getting there and doing what I want to come into every work.
Absolutely, and we brought this flag for Marvin to take us a memento of ZF.
Come on.
All right. We've only been involved with the county for five years, but we feel like we've been here forever and he's always made us feel very well.
Well, usually we're proud of Lawrence County, on the south side of the night, we're proud of it. We're proud to have you all with us.
Thank you.
Thanks. Resolution 1525, Project YAC, project presentation and endorsement agreement, Mr. Cruz.
Another piece of good news for Lawrence County. This is a project known as Project YAC. This is part of the process that you see in economic development projects where they would identify the fact that they're going to make an investment in the county. This simply gets the ball rolling. The next meeting, we'll see, the first meeting of the ordinances that will be forthcoming with this. This is a almost $18 million investment, 13 new jobs. The incentive is a 6% fixed mortgage agreement with 35% special source revenue credit. It was offered, the company that's here, appreciate you coming in, but thank you. We would certainly encourage favorable approval of this process to begin and hopefully have finished by the end of the year. This is a major, more dollars of investment, 13 more jobs in Lawrence County.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'll ask for a motion for resolution 1525.
Mr. Chairman, I move resolution 201525.
Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and second, any other discussion?
Mr. Cruz, there's a location that we've identified at this point, are we able to identify the location?
We'll do that at the, at the 3rd.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll call the vote, all in favor, raise your right hand, in favor? Seven, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, council.
I've got a committee assignment that might think I'm picking on them a little bit, but it's a committee on health and emergency services. Mr. Pitts, Chair, Keith Thawson, Mr. Chum, it's been bothering my attention over the last eight months. About to turn over rate in our EMS service. We basically training people for our EMS service and they work however, however long they have to work and they get somewhere else for a little bit more money. We've lost five paramedics and two paramedic students since July 3rd, 2015. We've lost three lieutenants, paramedic acquired positions, and one paramedic student within the past two weeks. We do not have any current paramedic applications on file. We're aware of at least two more current paramedics who have interviewed with another service and if they leave, we're going to have seven paramedic openings. Right now, we currently have five paramedic openings with no applications on file and it's, it's simply unable to attract qualified paramedics due to non-competitive waiting. And I got some paperwork I won't, I won't pass out, but I want this committee to, before the next council meeting, to have a meeting and see if they can come to some kind of resolution on that. It's basically the same thing we had in our detention center, basically two, two years ago, we talked about that about four, three, four years. We finally did something about it and now our detention center stays pretty well full of staff. I know it's hard to talk about any kind of rates at all in the middle of the year, but we need to at least be competitive because we're really losing money training people and they hiring somewhere else. So I'd like for Mr. Seeger to put that, some kind of, come up with a committee meeting on that sometime between here and next, next meeting and see if we can come to some kind of resolution on that.
Mr. Chairman, this is, I need to make a statement there, this is a suddenly rising problem. For real, and I've talked about this over the past several years, we've entertained a hero for several times, the same problem. So this, just like the detention center, I just want people to understand that this is not something to come up since the detention center issue, as a matter of fact, it's something we've put to the side to attack the detention center issue. So this is an ongoing broad admin, but sometime in that department, we certainly understand we have identified this, this play reason, so. I look forward to getting involved.
I like very serious situation, I mean, but go ahead.
In the past, we also had problems in this area of EMS and we addressed them and we addressed them with a pay increase at that particular time too. So it continued to be a problem and it's also a problem not only in Lawrence County, but all over the whole state. EMS employees just hard to come back and will not stay long in the situation that they're in, so.
We're not talking about a whole lot of money to be paid with someone like Greenwood County. Greenwood County is a little bit over us, if we can at least get it, or Greenwood County does, maybe we'll have some.
I'm not speaking against anything, I'm just saying it's just not, has that always been a problem here?
Yeah, I agree. Oh, next thing is our administrative report, Mr. Ernie Seeger.
Chairman, I've got one thing, at six o'clock, I think, there's a public meeting on the Transco Charleston gas line project, we had heard from a message about a month ago, I didn't realize it was going to be on the same night as council meeting, but that meeting starts at six o'clock, starting, six o'clock, R and Y C A. Anderson Drive, I don't got a director session coming, but I'm going to try to get up there at the end of this meeting at all possible. I think they've got, I think they do it like DOT, they've got maps up with, you know, the kind of show the terrain and where they're going and something like, something like 40 miles, I think, from Moore down to Chapel, you know, and a good, a two-thirds, a third of it to Lawrence County, at least in part. You can make that much of a while. We haven't had any complaints about it, we haven't had any comments about it, had any calls about it, I'm aware of it, but still, they're still trying to pick the correct route and go shoot a plan on it somewhere, but they are, so that night, so if you ever make any, it might be, it's all a while to live.
Next thing is, I put the comment down, 15 minutes, have something you want to say to council, put the comment down, come forward, state your name, try to hold it five minutes. No one wants to speak, we'll close the book of comment time and I'll ask comments from council members, Mr. Thawson.
That's my fifth time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Matt.
Well, we give ZF a commendation tonight and I'm proud to be here in the county or district that I serve, and we are good to look at, appreciate all the jobs they have up there, people. It's just pretty to wipe out that way, it is really outstanding, grace and everything going on in there. We're just proud to have them. We're just proud to have you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank ZF, a hundred years in business is awesome. So that's really cool and always proud to have ZF here in Lawrence County, a part of Lawrence County. And once again, I want to thank Director Perez and Director Avery and Mr. Lindley. Just thank everybody for all the services, everything that you've done and Sheriff Chad Stane back there. Just thank you for all your support, everything you've done during this tough time.
Mr. Sam.
I'm just going to expand to the ZF community, that we thank you for what you're doing. And Councilman Nat was talking about the landscape, but I see all the cars. And I like seeing all the cars, that means that there are people in there working. And I appreciate what you're doing for the county.
Mr. Dunn, what kind of this time? Mr. Pitts.
Two comments, one comment, a date request. I want to thank Major Tyson providing that date on the detention center. That's helped us to get that periodically. Secondly, committee assignment, Mr. Chairman just assigned to us, is next Tuesday a possibility at five thirty?
That's what I was looking at, because that's super.
Might have to check out. Next Tuesday at five thirty?
I think so, yes.
We'll meet, that's what I think, he'll probably, he'll probably get her, but we'll, we'll get something out to you.
Would it be good to have a planning commission come here too and meet with the committee? No, that's a different, that's a different.
Although I would recommend, Mr. Chairman, that the finance committee meet with the health and wellness committee, the health and safety committee, because if it's a budget implication, I think the finance committee should be brought in. But that's just my recommendation.
Okay, that would mean addition of Mr. Nat, the budget finances, Keith Thawson, Ted Nice and Dave Pitts. So. Mr. Nat, you come to me too. When the meeting is open to the full council, I'd encourage the whole council to come to this meeting next Tuesday. I'll certainly be here. But if, if that's all right, there's a one at five thirty next Tuesday afternoon.
Chairman, one more thing, I apologize. This, we walked here on the Thursday at four thirty at the Church Street building, five, four plus four. There'll be a training session for our planning commission. State law requires that they have certain training periodically to, to keep those folks eligible for those positions. And I think, just as I was doing, I think the county government will have a series of videotapes over it. And that's a church trip, I think, if anyone comes to it in the back there. That's all, thank you.
Well, I'd like to say ditto what was said for Mr. Miles about ZF. His words cannot tell how much we appreciate what you did and everybody else that did things running ZF here. And we're proud to have you in our county. We got two issues for executive session, do I have a motion going to executive session?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
A motion, I have a second. Motion and second, all in favor, raise your right hand. There'd be an employment matter and a contract of the matter. We'll take five minutes, we'll say, and go on to the next. We have a contract of the matter, no action taken, we had a person on matter, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we instruct administrator to continue negotiations with our attorney as we move to establish an attorney's office in the new Hill Press Drive office facility.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All in favor, seven zero.
Seven zero.
Mr. Pitts, let's see. He's not here, come for him. If not, we stand in the term.
All right.